Okay.
It's an horrible condition. And it's very horrible. Next year, next year, I've been living there sixty years. And in that sixty years. Yeah.
This. It's covered.
Unfortunately. We were. You. Always your best and worst. What we're challenging.
It's a box.
Um, and as a word. This year. I use. The thing that I want to. The topic. On working.
Appreciate it. Seven seconds.
Fraser. We need to roll down instead of talking history. Things on. Um, I mean, I guess some people do that too. I think we need very careful about what's happening. There've been more people that I think, but for us, I mean, um, I think that's what we need to do. I'm sort of, it was part of the town and all that stuff. It also has been. Now, very few people. So just, um, in some way, particularly on the role. Own, the action. You know. So we're just. That's all. I think there's one. Well, setting up a decision to shop, branding it, could be much bigger. There's a lot of ones that I think they have students who are so hardworking. I'm just. And you very much do with that. Our part to look at shop. And. So, well, two nights shops.
Yes.
Uh, I'm afraid it's your fire. So I see many one, I got them already. They're running on. Hello, we're. I'm speaking. Thank you for your job as well. And I would like to thank you for discussing most. So that was part of the reason. Thank you, Antler, because I see. We need to. So. Well, we. I still have. Um, I just.
Yeah, so. So Brandy, I should have anything because the engineers actually have to get a new proposal to design it and come up with that. And then we'll be doing the public workshops. The town manager would like to do several of those around that permanent solution. So once we have that, we'll get those public workshops out. You'll get your door hangers. Okay? Yep, I'm working on it. I grabbed the engineer when he was on the ski slopes, okay, to get him working on it.
I appreciate all of the.
Same. I think yes, I'm.
Soon.
Um, I'm back in now, okay?
When you should. This. That's our basis. They get to hear you here. As the. I'll be. Chris and you learn. Very. I'm going to give this. Now.
I'm.
This is. Just. None, what do you.
Hi.
Hi. Senator Wilson. Please let me read that. You're on. The purpose and. I should just. You know. Hi, hi. Or bits. Questions, comments, or comments? None. I. Yes. You're. And then just believe my. There's other ideas or considerations. That's good that you.
We have council entries just in lines. Um, I was kind of looking at your tree board for making the answers. I'd like. Good about the application that exists on breathing, big and practical. About trees. And I'm here to review not. Those tiny older roads trees protect above with chain of life style on sore water. They're paralyzing. The interest activated by reading a tree candy. Towards millions of thousands of stormwater runoff. They're mostly happy about their chain life. The more non-urban starts to know beginning of the worst near stormwater runoff. Come, there are being hair jokes and pines moving along for that. For each of the towns or grievances. By greeting, partying, and taking these around, first three being attacked large ships. So three times. Pass their dirt line into the road of this street horse. So when you're looking at a street canopy, imagine this live oak. It goes past that line of canopy by three or four times. Under the ground, under your dirt roads. So anytime you take, you're marking, you're impacting. You're climbing the roots of those very large oats that do all this remarkable duty about chain life. You just think of, um, trees as. Here, geez. They were talking about. But this town running for state notes, we're planting another street and we were reading there. Like lots of trees along the way from the car down. And the water being ever, you know, all over. Two thousand four. Two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Okay, these trees. Um, we're trying those trees like a lot with lungs in it out. Something with a path of water storm. Here. Then fish. Now, there's a future generation that will happen for my first, if you don't rank it. I believe the old trees they are, we lose more and more of that. There are no recent growing aids. There's a purity service and sitting at the side of the street canopy, there are times when there is a lot of this door. But the atmosphere much better. And when there's not purity service. So. Think about what we're doing here. We need not. Not. Who need it? We need to protect those, those trees and vines that. Are paralyzing down. And we're paying, we can't do that. And we're working out of this. So that, oh, we. Parking, we need to afford. The light. You know, here we have to stay in parking. Here, so we have only the same apartment. Shouldn't we do pay the value to add more to stay in parking? People are using the newer traffic. And then the bathroom, of course, the two cars that do this that aren't that little one here. They are getting advanced. Parking, you know, for me, this is. So I'm showing. Anyways, on this red place. We're. So take your test, neighbors shopping needs to prepare. More group. As your question. I need testing. That's your. Same time, they have to be used for this. Begin, and they're through this for. You want any projects? Let's go to where they're just pre-eating. We don't need more paid for a longer gap. As ability, I know that's coming up. We need to preserve white and broken space. We need to preserve field space in town square, town residence, town goods. Bottoms big, the county store here. The most evil one of the location is very present. Can we eat some of this? Eric, you settle this place, prevent, strike, then for evidence. All of them. To your Congress, this is the head of straight. Please. Major was performing music, we used to pay major is right here. In front of the town hall, where we can perform space wise before middle class that are perfectly wiping out. Says that other town residents, please leave for their events. Moving back to your, your own reading of a tree, aren't they? Our most important thing, the protection of the trees. Moving on this. And without the trees, you can't do that. Uh, we don't have to put a layer on my data. But now we stand down and straight up. He, he. His love was the man who's. Nor paid it, paid when they done them. So that was. And reasons was stormwater, there is a last now. Uh, again, the most important thing. New lakes, have water to be everywhere. I didn't saw all the water stop for this. If we don't protect it here. What do we do? So again, I urge you, please, um, not pay the.
I think. I think we should. I think we all agree. Other than. These individuals. Sure.
Hi, Dorothy. It's all great, specific followers. For company, please read that the meeting on the building is not. He agreed that. The one off then and mother will suffer them through speeding, driving, and not believing in parking on the streets. Maryland and where are you? I'm Sue Lander. I'm listening now with town house. Good street. Have a consideration given to Molly Hongbit that could illustrate the soft speed traffic. And excessive parking. Perfect case of. As a resident, you know. Three. Any meaning? As a section of print that we. And he knew the other kind of software. And also request having with every. To further. Because of the meetings night. Zero. Party, we're really pretty strict in terms of the castle that's my speed. Don't close if you can. I'm not. Maybe you must fit that. Just name. Eighty eight since the vote is not a problem for the top. There's a need to have herpes space. That is not useful or accessible for me because of the equipment is surprised by some of the space. And all the loading zones. Still, in relation to federal law, should be too. People's or equipment blocks or repeats the use of the required. Even if the business is not. I'm sure by this violation is acceptable or at least. I'm against. This travel to residential areas of our better community. And on this is traffic is hardly being accessible. Now, we're actually going to investigate. And we're having a lot is that the former bitten first rate of dirt. Is other cooperation. They have. And what's we said. The normal way to do it, cream or school. And how people rest and ends up finding. Avenue between Fourth Street, Hothersher. Being one. Swallow. Amy. Ice. Business district. Who the council should take care of the residents first. And on the businesses and best economy. Residents should daily face that fear. Tommy has something. She other than me. That is really not going to help residents in any way. Let me do this as a fan event. Thank you, John Spears. You. As.
I believe. That storage on hand. He. Oh, it's good to hear that. And, um. Even understood that. So this. Yeah. I. Exactly. This is the traditional. It's in the books.
Um, I'm not in favor of paving. I think one single. I shouldn't be in favor of it. I also don't want to go to any brick. Being free is a high maintenance item. Just have a need to be good. I like the idea of, um. I mean. That you're trying to make for. Uh, people being. From market. Yeah, I hope that you're. Better. It is worth, um, okay, they were kind of there and he. Probably enjoyed it.
That is. It is something. That computer. What's that? I see. I can really think that portion really. Or, or is also. More like. Oh, I'm reading. This.
Uh, it doesn't work.
Yeah.
Eric. Nice.
We need to speak for. I really. Whatever.
And again, I really want to thank this. This is not your fault. It's all an opportunity. To, you know, brought it to our attention and we figured this. And it's a good money saver. Please don't stop bringing those ideas up. See the refresh out behind.
Just. Say. So. See. I think that. And now. Yes. And there. I think. So. We call it. Yeah. Sometimes. You. Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, I do want to say that I'm sorry if I scared anyone by putting this item on the agenda, but we wanted to be able to close the loop because this came to town council. We were asked to take it to public information input. And so with Robert out, I developed the agenda. I thought we needed to bring it back because we needed to close the loop and I didn't want to make decisions for town council. Right.
Any reason? Official question. Certainly. I like. Not anything. That's good. Thank you.
Next.
Congratulations. All right, we can begin the Oscar. Oscar votes.
Hi.
Hi. And. And. All. That's me. Well. So. And. And. So. 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 Um. So.
You mean. You got flowers, Stan.
Yeah. Got a museum. Okay. I don't know. Support we get. We will. I. Thank you. Thank you. Um. I'm. Good. Right. We. Prove me. That. Oh, yeah. And, um. There's also. Please. Or. And he's coming.
We also, um, let me put you some there. Back like, uh, Sam Park Avenue or the wire. Tomorrow.
This is. That note. Okay. If it's. You can tell them. I lost. I need just the time. Those trees. I would be. No, maybe. Thanks. That's a bit rough. Your. Animal.
Long Island. And I'll be saying the road. I go outside. There. You want to do it.
Remind me. Anyway. Room.
Free Hill.
Free.
Yes. So they drove the entire town, but they weren't happy with some of the sections that came out. So they've redriven the town and they're waiting for that to render out. Um, and then they're going to make up. They want to do an announcement with us about the, the results of this because we're the first town in the United States to partner with them outside of Europe. So, um, it's a pretty big deal for them and they're wanting to make sure that that rendering comes out very nicely for us. So yes, we should have that shortly.
That we are.
Right now, I'm. And or this what we have.
It identifies where you have trees. It shows where there will be open spaces where there aren't trees. It will show where there's declining trees. It's, it's, it's pretty incredible what it can do. So, um, we're actually going to glean a lot of information. In fact, they think we'll be able to tell the type of tree, the circumference of the tree, the age of the tree. Um, through 3D imaging of the trees all the way around. And the declining nature. So, um, uh, we're really excited to take a look at it and see it. It's, it's pretty groundbreaking and, and the fact that they reached out to us and, and we got to, to be the ones to partner with them in North America first is pretty impressive. So I think, uh, I'll be excited when we can bring something to you on that. That'll be a great happy day for me.
Good stuff.
Right. And we're going to start up on the. Uh, we get our. Um, you.
Very.
I was. And then. They're. Now, I don't know. Oh, and the airport. Find it. We didn't firstly. You face. I know.
He's there.
Sure. So we, um, have a new, uh, lakes management contract they're working in the town called aquatic weed control. Had the pleasure of working with them a lot over the years. And so they started their work in November. They're providing us with the documentation that our lakes consultant needs to review. So we're, we're pretty happy they got started in November and we'll keep you updated on what they're doing. Additionally, our storm drain cleaning company is working round the clock to get the storm drains cleaned here in town. So what they're, they're doing currently is it's taken a little bit longer for this first round to get through town because some of it is pretty compacted in there. And they're having to do a lot of work to just get that cleared out. Once that's done, they'll be able to get on the, um, schedule that I gave them for every area of town and, and keep that, that going. It won't be as difficult, um, in the future. So we're really happy with the fact that they're continuing to do that work. So good news on the, the front for those two contractors. Additionally, um, Travis did take his stormwater inspection inspector, uh, session and test today and he passed. So very happy that, that Travis was able to do that. He was behind closed doors in his office for two days. I hope he'll forgive me. But he did pass. I'm really, really proud of that accomplishment. So I'm really, really proud of that accomplishment and that's all I have this evening.
Congrats. Get this.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Do you need? We can leave this. Any word? Maybe you're too long for that or three more than this. Our award. I think it was. Did we, did we? If we want to, and that's the contract. First of all, next to the box, that's always very good. And we can go off into the top of that. Is. For all of these. Third time's time on the demo. We never do that. Very useful. Just nation wide. Have a condition, have that.
Um, I had some questions about programs moving. Now, I'm telling you. Not even on this.
So it's hard to sit into problems on a really. Your. Your solution.
And we, and, and we don't own lakes.
No, you're not.
But anyways, um. Now we can advise. Yes, so you just need to.
Too high.
And. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I do have some information on that. So yes, we are waiting for the normal high water to go down because that's important for the residents that live on the lake um, and due to the wake, but also what Orange County is doing is they are sending, actually they also use aquatic weed control. They're sending them onto the lake. They asked me for permission to get on the lake this week and next week because they need to go through and make sure there's nothing dangerous under the water that broke loose and, and is, just can't be seen. So their, their contractor, they just notified me their content will be going through the chain of lakes in the next couple of weeks to, to ascertain that. So I think that's one of the other things they've been looking at.
You know.
Yes. That's exactly true. Yes.
Yeah. Now, I'm big.
The part is the water is, um, as high as it is now and higher, we never, ever closed before. So I don't know if this is a moving policy and prohibited.
Right. There's all of.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to hang on.
This. More. Probably so. What we're asking, we're not. We're not.
It sounds. What? And more. They're not. You're not old.
And there is. Of course. There's a. Birds. See. Who reducing? This will.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. McKinley. Mr. Mayor, I think I can help. And in addition, Mr. Mayor, public entities, when they have public ramps that access the lake have higher, have a higher liability issue if they let people out there and something happens. And so I think, you know, their public entities are taking some extreme caution with this because of that.
You know, the whole new. There. Or. Honestly, I'm a. Appreciate it. But. Yes. Better. Thank you. This. It's. Thank you. We're.
Yeah.
We're. We have a lot of time. Women. I don't. Here, um, the word. Take. No. Yeah. Down on. You're looking away from. And cheers. We.